Going live on YouTube. And we are. We are broadcasting now, Mr. Feinberg.
Thank you, Anna. Just going to wait a minute for folks to come in from the waiting room.
Going live on YouTube.
Hey. Like all this meeting to order. Welcome to the special board meeting. November 23rd, 2020 of the school district of Haverford Township. If we could please say the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And for the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Regal, could you call the roll, please?
Okay, Dr. Crispin.
Here.
Mr. Fleischer.
Here.
Ms. Larson.
Here.
Ms. Minji.
Here.
Mr. Sinto.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz.
Here.
Ms. Snodgrass.
Here.
Ms. Wedeman.
Here.
And Mr. Feinberg.
Here. Thank you, Bob. Anna, I understand we have a number of submissions for public comment this evening.
Yes, we do, Mr. Feinberg. We have 11. Um. We don't have to do agenda meetings first, right? Okay, I usually, I am, I'm sorry, I was a bit confused. Usually we approve the meetings from the prior, the minutes for the prior meeting. I'll start. So our first comment is from Stephanie Sullivan at 517 Paddock Road. Comment regarding November 19th meeting could potential district return to virtual. Dear board members, I am a parent of a second grader within the district and I have just finished watching the November 9th school board meeting. Thank you to Dr. Ruchi and the other individuals that have laid out the current status of staffing within the district. My comment is in regard to the recommendation to return all classes to virtual learning November 30th to December 9th. When hybrid learning was set up, there was a clear plan to quarantine classes and teachers as needed. If this is occurring within the district, why is there a need to shut down the entire district for in-person learning? I understand that there will be staffing shortages if a teacher is sick or exposed and the class is not. In those instances, select classes can go virtual, but it is not clear to me why the entire district has to go virtual. In addition, if a teacher is sick and cannot teach while the students are in the virtual model, the same staffing issue will be present. Throughout the meeting, it was stated repeatedly that there is not spread or transmission within schools. Therefore, shutting down the schools will do nothing to control staffing. Issues related to exposure, sickness, or incident rate of the virus in our community rather would only negatively affect learning and emotional well-being in children. I hope that the board addresses this concern at the meeting and provides a response as I know this is a concern shared by many parents. Thank you. This is from Ross Anderson at 220 Heatherwood Road. Hi, Haverford Township Township School District. I greatly appreciate the effort that everyone has put forward in opening the schools and doing everything possible to keep everyone safe. I support the board in whatever decision they reach during Monday's meeting. In my opinion, I hope that the elementary schools stay open. It has been my understanding that the schools are not super spreaders of the virus that we once feared they would be, and that increases. Would be, and that increases in infections are more because of the increase in infections in the community and not necessarily related to spreads in school. I also have two young sons at Chadon Park who love going to school and need the in-person schooling for their development. Again, I will respect and support any decision that comes out of Monday's meeting. Thank you for listening. This is from Melana Perry at 34 Claremont Boulevard. Virtual, virtual learning comment. Hello, I think the school district should continue in-person learning for the elementary schools K to five after Thanksgiving. I don't have children attending elementary school, but if I did, I would have to take time off from work and/or find someone to be with my child during the day. Fortunately, my children are teenagers and I can manage on their own. My oldest son is a senior at Haverford High School and has attended schools in the district since he was in kindergarten. Transitioning to virtual learning for two weeks would likely add a financial burden on families. Need to pay someone to assist their children during the day where parents, especially mothers, could lose income because they need to take time off from work during these two weeks. With the holidays approaching, this is not a good time to be losing income or spending money on childcare. Also, I don't think it's necessary considering the younger children are less likely to be infected and spread the coronavirus. Scientific data has proven this and Dr. Robert Redfield, Director of the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, recently made the following statement. Last spring, the CDC did not recommend, did not recommend school closures, nor do we recommend their closures today. I will say back in the spring, there was limited data. Today, there is extensive data that we, we've gathered over the last two to three months to confirm that K through 12 schools can operate with face-to-face learning. And they can do so safely and they can do it responsibly. The infections that we've identified in schools when they've been evaluated were not acquired in schools. They were actually acquired in the community and in the household. I understand the school district's experience staffing shortages, but I think the school district should continue in-person learning, particularly in the elementary schools in Haverford Township. Sincerely. This is Matt Newbley at 321 Arlington Road, Haverstown, PA. Hello, I am ready to respectfully, respectfully disagree with the plans to move back to 100% virtual learning environment. I don't think there is anyone involved that believes we will return to school on December the 9th. In March, we all went to virtual learning for two weeks and did not return until October. The numbers that everyone is looking at will not move quickly. On December 9th, there will be talk about the Thanksgiving gatherings that will move to Christmas. There is too much incentive to simply stay home through the holiday, the new year, and eventually longer. While the reasoning behind the decision to return. Home is a valid one, the damage to our youngest learners cannot be overstated. I have two kids in first grade. We have a wonderful teacher and my wife is able to sit with the kids most of the day, a luxury most families do not have. Still, my children are falling behind. We have tutoring at night for two days a week to try to get them to where they need to be for reading. I'm not sure what my kids are retaining, but watching their teacher on video, most of us trying to work through the various. At-home assignments, and it is not just my kids who are struggling with their attention while on Zoom. You can see others going in and out of the videos. I understand the need to bring down the COVID number, but the state has implemented these changes. Let's see if they work before going virtual. We're limited to those schools that are having issues. If the issues are, is busing, then let the parents know. I'm sure that most parents will find a way to get their kids into school. Then you can focus on the kids that really have transportation issues. They're using a bomb on a problem that needs a laser. I hope you consider the needs of the children in making your decision. The next one is from Melissa Kostic at 124 Flint Hawk Road, Drexel Hill. This is for VOTEC and scheduling. Hello, I'd like to know what is being done to address the issue of VOTEC students missing all of their third block class and half of their fourth block class due to the poor scheduling done by the district. I do not understand why the district chose half-days to cause more disruption to the students than if they had full days in school, whether hybrid, remote, or otherwise. Public comment is from Summer Pay Alone at 1336 Robinson Avenue, Haverstown, PA. Despite the fact that our recent decision regarding opening and closing schools have not been metrics-based, are there metric benchmarks for the return to school on December 9th? My concern is that the district is not being fully transparent in the factors determining whether or not students will return on December the 9th. It is very easy for this proposal timeline for returning to be pushed back further and further as we approach the end of the year. The email mentioned following the seven-day trends and determining if it's acceptable to return. What are, what are you looking for exactly in these trends? We're obviously far past the metrics outlined in the beginning of the year. Is the expectation that those seven-day trends need to be decreased versus plateaued versus increased? If so, how much decreased or increased? Dr. Ruchi previously said that decisions to close the schools would be based on in-school transmissions, which obviously haven't, has not been the issue and has not guided the decision. To, to close now. So how is the district planning on evaluating the seven-day trend to determine if schools will, if kids will return on December the 9th? How much lead time are you prepared to give working parents who need to make arrangements in a likely event that the district does not return on December the 9th? I can't be at home quarantining and educating my children while also being at work taking care of your loved ones who do have the virus. My hospital does not close due to low staffing numbers or rising numbers of cases. I would at least appreciate more transparency and updated concrete metrics on how you expect to make your decisions about returning on December the 9th and opening and closing moving forward. Our next public comment is from Karen Weber at 221 Hill Lane, Haverstown. Hello, I'd like to leave public comment and make a request to the school board. My understanding is that the request to move to virtual is based on staffing issues and concerns. I understand that there are times when classes will need to move to virtual because teachers will need to quarantine, take sick, take sick days or care for their children that are required to quarantine. And I am sure with some deciding to travel for the Thanksgiving holiday, even more will have to quarantine. I am certainly comfortable with my child needing to do virtual learning if their teacher needs to quarantine. I understand how challenging it has been to get subs, but I would like to ask the board not to approve a blanket plan to close all schools for the staffing need. Can the board consider a plan to keep K to three in the hybrid model utilizing available support staff and aides to support those grades? These are the children that are, that really rely on their routine and their in-school learning and are most in need of childcare and sudden changes. I have been comfortable sending my child to school and feel that the school has done an amazing job with the precautions and safety. But I would very much like to avoid having my child exposed to new groups of kids and adults if I have to find new childcare. Thank you. This public comment is Steve Mellon at 513 Ellis Road in Haverstown. I am the parent of ninth and sixth grader in the district. I would like to comment in strong support of the proposal for a two-week shift to virtual learning after the Thanksgiving holiday. I believe the hybrid model has worked well and is the best available solution for this school year under the circumstances. We all know that there has been a dangerous surge in cases recently in our area and across the country. The Thanksgiving holiday poses additional risks because of the number of people who will be traveling out of state or having out-of-state visitors. Our schools are already short-staffed, and if we insist on going back to school immediately after the holiday, we run the risk of outbreaks that may spiral into a situation where we need to shut down things for good. I think taking the prudent step of a two-week return to virtual learning offers us the best chance of making it through the entire school year without having to go permanently virtual. I thank the superintendent and the members of the board for their thoughtful consideration of these issues. We're grateful that you're looking out for our kids and their educators. The next one is from Carolyn Sullivan at 608 Overhill Road. Message of support for moving to virtual. Hello, school board. First, I'd like to thank the members of our school board for making the difficult decisions needed to keep our children safe and educated in the middle of this pandemic. I am the parent of a first grader of Cooperstown Elementary School and I am running in support of returning to virtual learning as recommended by Dr. Ruchi. At the November 19th school board meeting, when our family decided on the hybrid program, it was with the understanding that the district would be responsive to incidence rates and percentage PCR positivity metrics. Outlined by the Chester County Department of Health and return to virtual if the numbers rose to levels of concern as they are now. While I understand that there has been little data showing spreads in school, I am concerned that this. That is still or will be occurring. Not every student who is sick is being tested. This is especially true for children who are asymptomatic and I suspect may account for why incidence rates are so low for student populations. We love our daughter's teacher in class, but at this point, we no longer feel comfortable risking exposure by sending her to school. We hope that the board will vote to move to a virtual model tonight's meeting and base our return off of when it is safe to do so instead of just staffing issues. One further note, we understand that Dr. Ruchi and other districts are closing in part due to the need to quarantine following Thanksgiving gatherings. We encourage the district to consider following the lead of other districts, private schools and colleges and remaining in a virtual model through winter break and into January. This would allow families to quarantine prior to winter break and give, and the holidays, enabling them to spend, safely spend time with their family as well as allowing a two-week period following winter break. Following potential gatherings and travel. Consistency is important to families and students' growth and well-being. This would eliminate the need to keep flipping back and forth between hybrid and virtual. Thank you. This is from Dan Weber at 221 Hill Lane. Closing. Thank you for hearing my comment. I want to address a potential transition to virtual school for two weeks after Thanksgiving. If closing the building for two weeks is about the safety of our, of the children and their health, can you please let us know the data to support the conclusions? Are there schools that have school spread? Are there schools in the areas, i.e. candidate, candidate that has already had their Thanksgiving where you've noticed community spread? And if it is about health, why two weeks? The numbers do not seem to be trending in a direction that would be better in two weeks. If it is about staffing, can the district find a way to support virtual for all, for those who need it? If there is a PDE policy and the, and the number of certified teachers in a building and those who have to call out due to illness requiring or quarantine. Has there been a staff survey to find out how many teachers will be out of state and need to quarantine? Please be transparent with these things so parents can feel comfortable with these difficult decisions. Thank you for your work through all of this. Our last comment is from Corey and Laurie Watkins at 517 Upland Road in Haverstown. Virtual transition meeting, 1123 is the, is the title. Dear Dr. Ruchi and school board members, after reading the most recent communication from the district, we are hoping to weigh in with a response. We have three students in the district ranging in grades one to six. We're trying to keep them in a loop with the status of their ever-changing learning environment and we shared the most recent update with them. They are very distraught with the prospect of going back to virtual learning for the foreseeable future. We as parents are also concerned as we see the virtual to be less effective to their academic and social development. As predicted by medical professionals, the fall has brought an increase in positive cases. We are now faced with deciding the best course of action for the district. Dr. Brennan stated that schools are not a driving factor for the increase in cases and that the county has experienced the largest increase in cases in the age range of 20 to 29. From our own research, we can see that there is very little data to support that children are a major risk to the spread of each, to each other. Based on this information, the communication you sent, the staffing issue seems to be the biggest hurdle to overcome. The email from Dr. Ruchi stated that staff members have been forced to stay home with symptoms and childcare issues. Furthermore, the upcoming Thanksgiving holiday poses a threat to increase the spread of the virus and force travelers to quarantine. The prediction about Thanksgiving is reminiscent of the communication we received at the end of the summer about Labor Day. The district, following the guidance of health professionals, started the Labor Day holiday as a catalyst for the spread of COVID. People were warned that they should forego holiday plans and avoid large gatherings. The holiday came and went and there was no spike in the numbers. One could suggest that people took advantage, took, took the advice of professionals and avoided situations that would put them at risk. We value the decision making skills of the staff and faculty of this district. We are the same individuals that we entrust to care for the physical and mental health of our children. We firmly believe that they are capable of following the guidance of health professionals and avoiding potentially dangerous situations over the Thanksgiving break. This short break would also be useful in getting staff back to health from COVID-like symptoms and getting, and get results from the tests that they may have, have had. The district has made it clear that it is the intentions of going back to a virtual model. With the upcoming holidays, Dr. Brennan suggested going virtual until mid-January. If these kids go home for virtual learning now, they will not see the inside of a building for two months. Is this the best situation for our children or just the easiest? Besides the obvious concerns of providing the best academic and social situation for our children, many families face other hardships with having children home full-time. Not all families have a stay-at-home parent or parents working from home. There are families with two full-time working parents who are central employees. For these reasons, we ask that you consider holding off going back to virtual learning, at least for as long as we can. It is important that you, that you hear that there are families in this district that want their learning done inside of a school building. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Mr. Feinberg.
Thank you, Anna, and thank you to all the folks who took time to, to write and to send in their, their comments this evening. At 2 o'clock this afternoon, Governor Wolf. Issued revised guidance. I'd like to take a couple of minutes and just read the. Statement that's out on his website this evening. Requiring strict safety measures in our schools. Summary, the Wolf administration is requiring pre-K to 12 public schools in counties that have been in a substantial transmission level. For at least two consecutive weeks to commit to safety measures to ensure the safety and well-being of students and educators. And I just interject here that Delaware County has been at the substantial level for the past four reporting weeks. If they choose not to. They must move to fully remote learning without any extracurricular activities. As of Friday, November 20th, there are 59 counties in the substantial transmission level for at least two consecutive weeks. The requirements for pre-K to 12 public schools in substantial counties for at least two consecutive weeks include the following. Schools are mandated to comply with updated protocols if a COVID-19 case is identified in the school building. By 5:00 PM Monday, November 30th, chief school administrators and the governing body president/chair must sign an attestation form. Stating that they have either transitioned to fully remote learning or are complying with the orders if they are conducting any in-person instruction. While in the substantial range of transmission. Third, those schools that do not sign or comply with an attestation are required to provide only fully remote learning. And suspend all extracurricular activities as long as the county remains in the substantial transmission level. All of us have a responsibility to slow the spread of this virus so our children can stay or return to the classroom, Governor Wolf said. We're seeing incidence rates at record levels. All over the state. And that's sort of the broader context. You know, we, as board members and as parents, we certainly understand and appreciate the concerns that were raised by. The parents who wrote in this evening. You know, our, our number one concern has been and continues to be the health and safety of our students. Our staff and our community at large. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Ruchi for an update.
Thank you, Mr. Feinberg. We have just a little bit of data to share with you this evening that in, in hindsight would have been good to include last week, but better late than never. And also now that we have last week completed, we're able to provide you with a comprehensive picture of the last two weeks. And at last week's board meeting and in the communication that we sent out, we indicated. That one of the primary reasons we are making the recommendation to move to virtual is due to staffing and the challenges that we are facing with staffing. And at that time, I mentioned that it's, but you know, we tend to think of teachers because that's, that's who we are. That's what we do. So we think of them immediately. And while we have staffing challenges in our, among our teaching ranks. And, you know, just really even made worse by the fact that there's a substitute shortage. I also noted to you that we have a severe shortage of instructional assistants. Those key people who provide, you know, provide so much important support to both students and teachers. This year, we are using instructional assistants. If a teacher must quarantine from home and that teacher is physically able to teach. You know, they are, are not feeling ill, so they are able to teach. We have assigned instructional assistants to serve as more or less a proctor in the, in the classroom, allowing the teacher to provide the instruction. And the instructional assistant as a, as a proctor to guide the students while they're there learning in the classroom. Another group that I mentioned and want to speak a little bit more about this evening is our bus drivers. So within those three areas, we have experienced what I would intentionally describe as some significant staffing shortages. So Anna, if you move on, on to the next slide, what we did here was we just took a look at our teacher staffing, teachers with three slides tonight. That's it. So we won't keep you for a long time. But looking at the week of November 9th and the week of November 16th, you know, which took us up to, to last week. So you can see an increase there, you know, moving from a total of 111 absences to 124. Now, of course, that does not mean that we had 124 teachers out all at the, on the same day. But there, you know, there were people who would have been out for a week. There were people who were out for both of those weeks. There may have been someone out for one day. To us, the reason that someone is out is not significant for the point that we're trying to make this evening. The point that we're trying to show you this evening is the number of absences that we are experiencing, but most important, the number that we cannot fill. So the week of, of November 9th, we were unable to fill 46 absences, absences across our district and they were teacher absences. The week of November 16th, we were unable to fill 59 of the absences. The total number of absences does not include here those teachers who are quarantining and teaching from home. Because technically they are not absent. So they are not putting in for, for into this system identifying as a day out. They are teaching, so we're not even including all of those individuals in there as well. The people that are helping us with that, on the next slide, you'll see instructional assistants going into those classrooms. And look at those unfilled absences. And this is a little bit of what Mrs. McGilvery was talking about last week in terms of trying to piece things together. So we're taking reading specialists. We're taking teacher of the gifted. We're taking a number of other people and we're using them to fill those gaps in the classrooms. So we went from 55 unfilled absences throughout the entire week of November 9th and we sustained it. So it, not that it, we're thrilled that it didn't increase, but it also did not decrease. We sustained that number of absences to be 56 unfilled absences. Of equal concern to us is the next slide and extremely telling. This is transportation. Transportation, we had 13 bus drivers who were, who needed to be out the week of, of November 9th. And that increased to 44 bus drivers the week of November 16th. We only have about 90 bus drivers. The fact that at least 80% of our bus drivers work part-time is what saved us the week of November 6th, November 16th. Because as a part-time driver, many of those terrific folks are willing to pick up some extra hours. So the challenge that we would face on a week like last week is if all of the, the needs occur for the morning runs. And our drivers are all out for the, for the morning runs. So we're looking for people who only drive for us in the afternoon to pick up some of those morning runs. Or people who only drive for us in the morning to then agree to pick up some of the afternoon runs. And they were able to, you know, piece and cobble together. So, you know, those vacancies. That is a, that is of. Critical concern to us as those number, we are already anticipating that even with a short week this week. Just from our activity today alone, that we will be very similar to 44 again, even though it's a very, a very short week for us. So when folks talk about the, you know, staffing, we need to think beyond the teachers. We need to think about all of the employee groups and the vital role. We are an entire system and our system cannot function with one employee group alone. Everyone has a vital role to, to play across the district. So when we're experiencing absences at this rate and we're doing the best that we can to fill those. Our primary reason for the recommendation to you tonight is thinking about the number of people, the additional numbers of people who are going to be quarantining. Or because they are a close contact or the people who will need to be in, in isolation. And those numbers just continuing to, to grow over, over time. Our hope is that by December 9th, we would be able to bring back at minimum. Our elementary students and our students who require some of the more intensive special education supports. Mr. Feinberg mentioned the information that came out of the governor's office today. We have that attestation form. Our solicitor is taking a look at that form. There's a meeting tomorrow with the Chester County Health Department to look at what role they will have in helping us to interpret that form. It's so, we may need to come back to you and ask the board to ratify at some point in time, but our goal is to sign that form and, and, you know, and get that form. In identifying that we intend to have students in our buildings. If you indicate on the form that you intend to have students in your buildings, it can be any combination thereof. So that would not prohibit us when we get to the December 9th time period to say, well, we completed the form indicating no one was in the building. So now we would have to go back and figure out how to, how to remedy that and be able to bring our students in. Indicating that you intend to have students in, it can be very small groups. It could be your youngest learners only. That is entirely up to the district. So we may be coming back if our solicitor advises that we need to do that, particularly because the form, I believe, and I'm not entirely sure, it's only a few hours ago. I believe the form may need to be appended to our health and safety plan. And if that's the case, then we would be bringing, bringing that back to you. So we'll. That's the additional data that we wanted to provide for, for you tonight, since we have two full weeks of it. And we're hoping that that even strengthens the. Even strengthens the rationale behind why we've made the recommendation that we have.
Thank you, Dr. Ruchi. I'll accept, well, I'll let me read the recommended action for this evening for the board. After a review of COVID-19 data in Delaware County and surrounding areas. Along with staffing needs in the district, the Board of School Directors approves the transition to an all remote mode of instruction. For all students starting Monday, November 30, 2020. And authorizes the administration to take all necessary steps. To implement the all remote mode of instruction starting November 30th, 2020. The administration will review the COVID-19 data along with staffing needs and resources in the district. And make a recommendation on the continued mode of instruction at the December 3rd, 2020 board meeting. I'll accept the motion for that item. It's moved.
My question is second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Antoinette.
I raised my hand virtually too. Yeah, um, I, I, I guess a couple of things because I was really appreciative of all the, the comments that we have in and I'm. Cognizant that there are a lot of folks joining right now. And also I'm sure we'll watch this later. And so. As Larry just said, the, the board is actually meeting next week on the next recommendation, right? I mean, so I just want everyone to know that. This isn't something that's just sort of going into the ether and we're not going to, we're not going to pick up and talk again. Right? And so what, whatever the, the vote is tonight, we're actually talking about another vote next week, which is next Thursday, December 3rd. But so I, I do think that it would be helpful for the public if we could address. What is the difference between this, this all virtual model that is being recommended? And you know, I think several, a theme of several of the comments tonight was, why can't we just quarantine one or two classes here and there? And, and you know, why isn't that a better solution? And so. If, if someone could, could speak to that, I think that would be helpful.
Certainly. I doubt our ability to transport students. I'm, I'm very concerned about our, our ability to transport. And we saw our colleagues over in Lower Merion, when they ran into that difficulty. And decided they would open schools and just let folks know that there was no transportation. That a large population of those students whose families qualified for free and reduced lunch were the students who were not able to get to school.
Right. And then, and then they're the ones who are not in person on the, on the days that they're supposed to be in person. So they're getting. You know, the teacher trying to plan for them to be there because this is something that, that was discussed at last, last week's meeting for the, for the kids that are in hybrid. The teacher actually plans, okay, I know, you know, Larry Feinberg is going to be in front of me today. And so I'm going to plan something for him, but he's actually at home because his parents can't get him to school without a bus. So then. Sorry, just about the asked attestation. I think Dr. Ruchi, you provided helpful context here. I had not actually even seen that. So thanks for bringing it up. The, the, the governor likes to come out with new things on days that we have board meetings. So I should have thought. The governor came out with something today because we're meeting, but I didn't have a chance to, to look at that. But so I guess, and, and I think you answered my question, Dr. Ruchi, but just to be sure, we're going to go ahead. The district is going to go ahead and, and fill that out as if we're having students in the building so that that doesn't become then a roadblock. To the December 9th. And, and I know that the solicitor is looking at it. So this might become sort of a legal question, but. Do we anticipate having any issues with that attestation? I mean, I, from what, obviously from what I know of this, the health and safety plan. Of like I said, I haven't seen the governor's order or the attestation that's appended to it, but. I would think that we're already complying with all of those. Requirements. Is that the case?
I would, I would like to believe so, but like you, Antoinette, I have actually the way that my day unfolded. I have not had an opportunity to really dive into that.
Okay. So now if I can just add quickly, I did listen to the governor speak today. And again, this will go through legal review and all, but my understanding is it really just is. A reaffirming of the practices we've already approved for the health and safety plan to make sure we're doing masking, social distancing. Those are the things the governor, governor mentioned and Dr. Levine. So at least from what I heard on surface level, it sounds like we are most likely compliant.
Great. Thanks for that context, Kristen. Yeah. And that's what I would have thought. You know, because we do have a really comprehensive plan, which I think is, you know, a credit to not having transmission in schools, but. But so thank you for that. And I guess one last thing. Because since a lot of it is about staffing, I guess, I think it would be helpful for folks to know. I mean, when do you hear about these absences, right? I mean, people don't tell you a week beforehand, I'm going to be absent next Wednesday with a potential quarantine issue. Right? And so I think that's, that's another thing that maybe, you know. Would be good to, to sort of see for everyone to see like, what does your day look like? You know, 6:00 AM or whenever it starts to start earlier than I hope.
So actually our principals, you know, that's the first thing that they take a look at when they go into the building. But the. That the help with quarantining is that, you know, if someone is out, out and you know. Like once that person goes out, you do know when their return date is. So it's, it is a little bit better than, I'm not really feeling well. I'm, I'm out today. I might be out tomorrow. If someone is quarantining, you know, when their, when their return date is. So some of that is helpful. We, you know, with the, you know, with the planning.
Okay, thanks. Yeah. And I guess just on a, on a personal comment. You know, we hear a lot from, from parents and from, from folks who have elementary age children and. I just want to say that I think everyone in this board, regardless of whether we have elementary age children, we understand what. How important it is for them to be in the schools. My daughter is in the hybrid program and you know, to. I, I get her off the bus and she has a, a big smile on her face underneath a mask and her glasses, but I can still tell like what a great day she had before I even talked to her. So I, I really understand that everyone wants the, the students in school. I understand. I see it personally of how it affects everyone and. I don't think that anyone on the board or in the district is taking this decision lightly. I just think that it's, it's about being responsible, but it's also about being practical, you know, on the staffing side. And so. We all want our kids in schools. I really want mine in school too and. Do the responsible thing over Thanksgiving. Let's get these numbers down. Let's make sure that we don't have to have as many quarantines happening. And I think Dr. Brennan said that COVID is knocking on our doors, right? So let's, as a community get, come together and. Try and not even let it be knocking. Thanks, Larry.
Thanks, Antoinette. Thank you very much. And Kristen, thanks for listening to the governor's speech today. Appreciate your input there. The other thing I'd like to mention is that, you know, I, I. I saw that he had made a speech and I've tried to review some of the material online today, but. It references a lot of supplementary materials. So hopefully by, by tomorrow morning. Either the DCIU or Chester County Health Department will be able to help us out with some of the details, perhaps PSBA. And you know, as we get more information, we'll, we'll pass that along. Next up, Ari.
Thanks, Larry. I just want to first and foremost say I support kids being in school. We've heard a lot about. Numbers and we've heard a lot of medical experts and policymakers lately talk about how important. It is that kids are in school and I echo those sentiments. With regards to the staffing challenges, are, are we talking just about quarantine situations or is this larger than that? Is this different than just a big quarantine quandary?
Well, if you're asking, the numbers represent anyone who was out. And that could be, you know, someone who is. Just out, not feeling well for that particular day, but they're not displaying symptoms and, and they're back in it, you know, in another day. That does not represent the number of people who, you know, who are in quarantine. The quarantine is what is problematic because you see those numbers grow. So you know what's ahead of you for the next 10 days or so. As a building principal, you know that with the six feet of social distancing, you no longer have latitude. To even like two teachers are out or a teacher is out, I'm going to take the children from that class. Like our principals would combine classes. When, you know, when, if a teacher was out and we were experiencing the substitute shortage. That many of the strategies that our principals would go to. When they were in need of a substitute are no longer available to them, you know, given, given these requirements. And then on top of that, the shortage of substitutes.
Right. Which is a problem in all of maybe teaching, education, beyond southeastern Pennsylvania. Understood. So I, I'd like to just put you a little bit on the spot and I hope you don't mind. You don't need to answer. Me or the board tonight, but I want to talk a little bit about hopefully what a perfect world looks like. And I know. Everyone out here is experiencing significant challenges. In their everyday life. I know that the district is experiencing and our students and our staff. Everyone's having to make lemonade and hopefully it's the sweetest lemonade that they can make with all the lemons that you're having to encounter. But you know, in, in a perfect world scenario, knowing what we know now, even in a. You know, environment where cases are, are rising and more people are testing positive, that schools are the safest place for kids. And that the transmission risk is relatively low in Havre Township. We talked a lot about when we decided to go from hybrid to virtual, not getting complacent in this hybrid. Model that we designed and approved and, and looking at ways to continue to reinvent ourselves. Improve upon it and make changes if necessary. So for a, a future meeting, I'd love to learn a little bit more about. If you've had that opportunity to look into these things and see if we can get. More usage out of our buildings, both in terms of five days a week and then more time in our buildings for our students. Thank you.
Next up, Bridget.
Thank you. And maybe this is a kind of a follow-on. Ari, would you be able to put some of the absences numbers? In context of what, like a typical November week might be? Like I understand that the numbers you presented and the strain there, but. Is there some kind of order or magnitude of, of how this is different than typical fall week?
Yes, we certainly can do that. That's, that's an easy enough comparison to make. The variable that is unique this year is the high absentee rate that every school district is experiencing. So we are all vying for the same candidates. So the, the, you know, substitute teacher shortage is what is making this more of a concern, you know, or. You know, just making the problem worse than, than it was in prior years. But the data itself, we, we can, but there's, you know, there's a story to all of it and I just, I wouldn't want that piece to get lost.
Okay. And I, you know, it's not hard to think back now, a month ago, two, three months ago, when we were. Looking at data where our incidence rate was like 60 or 70 and then got down to 30, 40. I, I don't think any of us, certainly not me, could have imagined then that we'd be looking at incidence rate. Over 300 and positivity rate of 10%. And I, you know, appreciate that that level of community transmission. Is putting a strain on testing, on contact tracing and is. Just kind of by definition, increasing the number of people who need to quarantine and are leading to some staff. Challenges and the challenges of families of getting their kids to school on the days that they're assigned and things like that. My question then would be. Will. We have the Thanksgiving break. Come back, starting virtual per the proposal. Monday, November 30th, and then we meet December 3rd. What will the data tell us or what will, what will we be looking at on December 3rd to better understand? Kind of the situation and the prospects for potentially bringing students back in December 9th?
We're going to, one of the things that we're going to be taking a look at is the number of people who. Will still be going through quarantine at that point in time. If we're at the numbers where we are now, hopefully even a little, a little bit less. We should be able to piece something, you know, piece things together. If those numbers increase as they are expected to, to increase, then that would be a concern that we would share with you.
Okay. And I looked briefly at the governor's release and Larry followed, to your point, like followed. Like a link to a link to a link, trying to figure out what information was in there. And Kristen, appreciate your sense that the things that were included in. This new guidance are things that largely the district has been doing. It did sound like in the. In the governor's statement that they were kind of. At more, more increased kind of protocols around COVID reporting and some other things. One of the. One of the things that PDE includes their website is the like low, moderate and substantial. Levels of community spread and we're definitely in the substantial one. And then there are instructions for. Returning from hybrid to virtual based on number of cases in a school building. So if it's. Less than seven cases, it might be, I think it was like a three to seven day return to virtual. If it was more than seven cases, it was a 14 day return to virtual. And with that, my question is. Between Thanksgiving and as long as we're in a virtual mode. Will we be collecting? The data that would tell us how many positive cases are in our school? If that is the triggers about how we would be able to, to be in hybrid or to maintain a hybrid?
We are still collecting, collecting the data. I, I want to caution people, we are still open, like our schools are still open. Our, and, and in our communication to parents, we are asking parents to still stay in touch with your child's school nurse. And to let your child's school nurse know if your child becomes, you know, is positive or becomes identified as a close contact. And they would not be returning. So we will have that information. And, and again, I'm, I'm very sorry, Bridget. I, I just did not, I, I couldn't. You know, thoroughly look at that information today. So I don't know if any of those charts. And the numbers, I, I believe now what they have done is broken it down by the size of the building. So you know, that, I don't know if that's going to make a difference for us. If that does, and we're still working, we will get communication out to, you know, to people. What, what, once we figure out what, what it all means for us.
Okay. I think my, the main concern I had is if I'm correct, when the school year began. And we were in an all virtual mode. We were not at that time collecting data of positive students who were enrolled in our school, but obviously not attending because we were virtual, but. It sounds like for this hopefully short period when we are in a virtual mode, that is data we do want to continue to collect and report.
Yep. Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I think that, that's helpful for, for people to know and. I do appreciate all the efforts of the district to, one, have successfully as much as possible mitigated. The, you know, the COVID in our school buildings and follow. The health and safety plan with the distancing and masking and all of that. And I. I think it is extremely frustrating as a society that we are at the point of. Thinking about having to close schools when, as been reported by my fellow board members. You know, tools are not really the place where we see the virus spreading and outbreaks. But that, that seems to be, you know, where we find ourselves. And I, I really do hope that people use this Thanksgiving break as a time to safely gather. With your loved ones within your home and. Stay safe and away from the virus so that we will be able to gather as school communities back in our building sometime soon.
Thanks, Bridget. Next up, Dave.
I thank you. And I may, I may echo what Bridget said here. But first of all, I want to thank Dr. Ruchi and everybody for putting out those numbers today for us and for the public. It puts, it really puts things into perspective. This is not a simple, and people should understand, it's not a simple staff shortage. We're at a point where it is like mission critical. I mean, we've already had a couple, we've already had a school where a couple of grades have had to go from hybrid to virtual. We reached that point where we're starting to see that. I mean, God forbid, there's a larger outbreak among our staff. Two weeks will seem like, like a picnic. I, I mean, you know, one thing, it just, it made my butt boil today. I was listening to Dr. Fauci, actually. We're in the middle of the surge right now throughout Pennsylvania, throughout the country. He's concerned about a surge upon a surge. We have seen holidays in the past where there's been a surge after the holidays and a number that drove me crazy. 50 million people are saying that they're gonna get together in large groups and have Thanksgiving dinner. 50 million. Now in Haverford, we're pretty good. People here generally are responsible. We're the fire pit capital of Delaware County. If you pull, if you get together, they generally do it outside, which is, you know, probably a bit better, but by like 50 million people, we are not immune to that. And, you know, we are gonna see this surge upon a surge and, you know, having two weeks off afterwards and evaluating the numbers, because I believe, Dr. Ruchi, you indicated that if we're gonna see some numbers at a next board meeting on, uh, on the 3rd, we'll get some idea of if there is a post Thanksgiving surge like we're all expecting. So closing schools for two weeks, just to keep in mind, this is not being done from a, you know, an overabundance of caution. This is done because we are at a, we're at a breaking point. And if we give it, if, you know, forgive ourselves this two-week respite, hopefully that will help to bring things down. Now, um, we are gonna focus heavily on getting, you know, younger students, especially new students back into school as soon as possible. But please, I, uh, I'm telling you right now, if you're getting together, you know, change your plans. Simple as that. It's, it, it is simply not worth it. If, if you're wondering why schools are closing, you know, it's us. It's all of us. That's why. There's no other way. There's no nice way of putting it. And if I'm being indelicate, I apologize, but that is the reason. 50 million people. It's not all of us. It's, it's all of us, but as many of us, so just, you know, please understand what we're doing and I, I, I urge you, use caution. This is, you know, we don't wanna have to do this. Hopefully we won't have to do it again.
Thanks, Dave. Next up, Laura.
Um, so Dr. Ruchi, I had just a couple of, um, practical questions. Um, one of them was about if we are going virtual, what are those virtual days gonna look like? Um, and how is that information gonna be communicated to parents? Is it gonna be the same schedule that it was when we started the school year fully virtual or is it gonna be a little bit different? And if parents have questions about that, um, I know parents are gonna, some parents are gonna have to rearrange their schedules a bit. Um, you know, to be home with their children and stuff like that. So, um, you know, kind of, do we have a sense of what they can expect? Or who could they reach out to to ask about that?
The, um, the building principals, I mean, first that, you know, the children's teachers will event, you know, share some information with them as well, but the building principals will be sending communication so that families know what to expect at each one of the levels.
Okay. Um, so that's helpful. Thank you. Um, and then, um, another concern of mine is that many students are going to have to quarantine because of Thanksgiving whatevers. Um, do, is there going to be something like a survey or anything like that to kind of get a sense of the numbers of students? Cause what I would really hate is for us to sort of plan a big ramp up to come back to hybrid and then find out that almost none of our students can come back because of quarantine issues. Is there a sense that we're gonna do some kind of a, does that make sense? Does, is there a sense? Okay. Is there a sense? I know, I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't wanna put more burden on teachers to prepare to come back to hybrid and then find out that there, the students aren't coming back, right? At the rates that we expected or that, um, you know, parents aren't comfortable sending their kids back. So, um, I'm just kind of wondering, is there a sense that we might do another survey just to find out what are the numbers gonna look like in two weeks? You know, who's, who's coming back, who's planning to come back, who's planning to stay fully online, that sort of thing?
And I, my answer tonight is that I'm not sure of that yet until I talk with the team. Um, no, that's okay. Until I talk with the team, would it be a formal survey that would go out or would it be information that the teacher, because the teachers will still be working, you know, with the children virtually. So is it information that the teacher would, would be able to, you know, to collect? So I wanna talk with the team about that.
Okay, great. Yeah. I just, I think in terms of planning purposes, it could be really helpful to just get a sense of the, the numbers. Um, and then my last thing is just, um, sort of a, a statement, um, for the public. Uh, after our last meeting, I went to the CHOP Policy Lab website, which is really good with data and their forecasts um, are, are generally pretty good. Um, if you haven't seen the forecasts coming out of the CHOP Policy Lab, um, I would encourage you to look at that and, um, it's sort of horrifying. So, um, you know, sort of as Dr. Brennan said, you know, we haven't peaked yet and that's sort of what the policy lab is showing. If you think it's bad now, it's gonna be twice as bad in about a month from now is what policy lab is showing. So, um, I think everybody's already said what I was gonna say, but you know, the data is sort of there to, to sort of show that. So, um, in any case, that's all I have to say. So, thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Next up, Kristen.
Thanks. Um, so something else that I heard today during the governor's, um, this discussion around COVID was that if we haven't assumed this already, the red, yellow, green system has been more or less abandoned. Um, and I know that that's referenced in our health and safety plan. I'm not sure if this will come through in the attestation form, um, or if we need to maybe retool the health and safety plan, um, to kind of account for this. Um, I think many of us would agree that even though we were in green, it green signifies go, but we still were supposed to be implementing all sorts of safety measures. So I, I'm guessing they just assumed that system really wasn't the best choice. Um, so just something to consider. Um, and a question, Dr. Ruchi. Um, so if we do just determine to go virtual for these two weeks, would staff be required to work in the school buildings? Would they still have the option to work in a school building? Will they be working from home? Is there flexibility there?
There's, there's flexibility. The direction has been for the staff members to speak with the, you know, with the building principal. I mean, the last thing we want to do is increase our need for substitutes because, you know, because people are, you know, in a different location. Uh, but they, there is flexibility.
Okay. Thanks. That's it.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Dr. Ruchi, do you have anything else before we vote on this?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Sorry, Larry. Just one more thing. I apologize. Um, for anyone who is in need of COVID testing for your child, um, I just wanna give a plug for CHOP. Um, if you just go on Google, um, search for CHOP COVID test, um, you can answer a questionnaire. You don't even need a recommendation from a doctor or a letter from a doctor. Um, based on your questionnaire responses, you will be prompted to make an appointment potentially. Um, you are required to have an appointment though at any of their sites. Um, they promise test results within 24 to 48 hours. Um, speaking from experience here, my experience is they get back to you within the day. So we've been very happy and, um, in dealing with them and they're great at working with children, especially younger ones too. Um, so again, if, if you need some testing for your child, please look into CHOP.
Thank you, Kristen. All right. Uh, that being said, uh, all in favor of, uh, of this recommended action?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. One opposed. Thank you, everybody. You know, rolling into Thanksgiving, if it's possible to have a small nuclear family gathering, uh, that's what is strongly encouraged. I know everybody is weary of, uh, nine months of COVID. But, uh, we need people to take appropriate measures to try and keep these numbers down so that we can open our schools. Uh, and we absolutely appreciate any cooperation, uh, that we can get from the community. Wednesday before Thanksgiving is traditionally, I believe, the busiest bar night of the year. Uh, the governor addressed that in his, uh, statement today. Uh, I believe he's asked the bars uh, to stop serving alcohol from 5:00 PM on Wednesday until 8:00 AM on Thursday. You guys, you're from Haverford, Haverford town. You just put that into that context. So I would say please to our members of the community, do that at home. Zoom with the guys that, or, or the gals that you would be, uh, meeting, uh, on Brookline Boulevard or wherever. Can't stress it enough. Keep wearing masks, keep social distancing, avoid the gathering. Uh, our next regular public board meeting?
December 3rd.
Is December 3rd. Uh, that's, uh, right here in, in our Zoom theater. Uh, with that, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Moved, seconded.
Thanks, everybody. Have a great Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.